The call to order the Planning Commission meeting, it is four thirty Thursday, October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. Before we begin with the agenda, I'd like to introduce Bobby Ferr, a new member of the commission. And could we all go around and introduce ourselves for Bobby?
Joe Schosko.
Michelle Salner.
I'm Anne Earl.
Larry Mack.
Kate Mochel.
Welcome.
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 Thank you for joining us. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Any corrections or additions? Undertain a motion?
All, all are motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
I have motion to approve the minutes from the September twenty-eighth meeting as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been filed for audit. Next on the agenda is the plat. Consider for approval the preliminary plat of Alliance Bank, first edition. City report.
Okay, the applicant in this particular case is Bob Ruder, on behalf of the, and he is the regional president of Alliance Bank. Alliance Bank owns the entire half-block. It is divided into five parcels, even, there's seven lots, five parcels. And the five parcels have a variety of different ownerships, and that information is provided on the staff report. You will note that we have Alliance Bank, we have F and M Alliance Bank, and we have Farmers and Merchants State Bank of New Ulm. So that makes up the ownership. As I indicated, the legal description is lots eight through fourteen, block sixty-two north of Center Street. The street address of the two buildings on the half-block is three twenty-two and three thirty-six North Minnesota Street. Property is generally located east of North Minnesota Street and is located between Third and Fourth North Street. The land use designation for this half-block is downtown in the comprehensive plan. And the surrounding land uses to the northeast and south is downtown, and to the west it's downtown, and then park and open space. Zoning designation, it's B four, which is a central business district. To the north, south, and west, we have a similar zoning. To the east, it's B four and B one, which is a limited business district. Current site use, we have the Alliance Bank building, drive-through, and parking lot, and that is the building on the southern part of this half-block. And then we have the vacant Alliance Bank building, drive-through, and parking on the north side of the half-block. Other area land uses, to the north, we have a restaurant and apartment building. To the east, we have two single-family dwellings and the germestrazi condominiums. To the south is the vacant Wells Fargo Bank building and the Kiesling House, and to the west are downtown buildings and parking and the Glockenspiel. Notice is not required for a preliminary plat, and public comment to date, we have not received any. Status of utilities, utilities currently serve the property and would, and we are in position to serve other developments should it take place on the half-block. Comprehensive plan does not recommend a park within the platted area. The project or plat description is as follows. The property is located in the city's grid pattern. The platted area totals one point three four acres and consists of one half-block of property. The property currently consists of seven lots and five parcels. The plat will divide the property into two lots. The platted area is surrounded by three streets and an alley. The plat would divide the property as follows. Lot one would be twenty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-two square feet, and that's point five-five acres. Lot two would be thirty-four thousand two hundred fifty-four square feet, and that's point seven-nine acres. The property line between the two lots would generally follow the retaining wall located in mid-block. I can be a little bit more precise about that now. The curb that is on the south side of the former drive-through for the former building, where that curb is the gutter portion, so that's the part that carries the water, that's where the property line is going to be. And it's going to follow that gutter all the way down until it intersects approximately with the retaining wall. And it's going to transition at that point to being one foot off of the retaining wall for the entire length of the retaining wall. So the retaining wall does separate the two drive-throughs. The southern drive-through has a higher elevation than the northern one. There are no lot standards in the B four zoning district, and the plat would facilitate the possible sale of lot one. So the attachments that are included with the report is the preliminary plat, which is currently on the video monitor. There's a site location map. There's a zoning map. And then there are ground level photographs. And so the one that John has on the monitor right now shows, you know, the approximate location of the property line. It's an aerial photograph. Picture of the, I guess, the old Alliance Bank building. To the left is a photograph showing that curb area that where the property line will be located. It's a long, longer distance photograph. This is from the alley. Also from the alley. And that's of the new bank building. Staff would recommend approval of the preliminary plat with conditions since it complies with city code requirements. Recommended conditions are that they pay the plating fee of two hundred sixty dollars, it's a base fee of two hundred dollars and thirty dollars per lot. Provide an electronic file of the plat in an AutoCAD two thousand and sixteen or newer format. And then thirdly, provide and record an access easement, allowing the owner of lot two to utilize a portion of lot one to perform necessary maintenance, repair, and construction activities associated with the retaining wall adjoining the property line between lot one and lot two. And the bank is aware of that particular situation, which, you know, does require some type of an easement for them to be able to do maintenance. And they, my understanding, will be preparing some type of easement arrangement with the new property owner. Potential motions are provided. We have one to approve the preliminary plat with conditions, and then one to deny with reasons to be provided by the Planning Commission. That would conclude the staff report.
Okay. Are there any questions for the city? I had one question, and it was just in passing. We were talking, the last point was talking about the maintenance on the retaining wall. Retaining wall is on the current banks.
Yes, it is.
And they are responsible for that, where the sale of the lot, so the person purchasing the old property would not be responsible for the maintenance, it's the current bank that is responsible, so they have to do it.
Yes.
So the easement is with this, okay.
Yeah, the easement would be granted by the owner of the old bank building.
The old bank. Yeah. For some reason, my brain was twisting that, and I thought that didn't make sense.
Seems pretty cut and dry. I mean.
Well, certainly if they're going to sell the property, it's.
Correct.
Nothing.
Do you foresee any issues with that odd lot line? Does that ever create any issues, the fact that?
We've dealt with curved property lines before. You know, you'll note in the diagram of the plat that there are a number of monuments that'll have to be placed to indicate its location. I, I don't think that should cause a problem.
Okay. John, would you go back to the alley view so I can see it on the bigger, there, that's Is disposal still in that back, or is that, all the garbage disposal along that back corner of the, is that, that's part of the new part that's being sold off? So the old, the new bank has no, would have no access to any of that because they have no alley access, the alley access goes into their?
The alley goes into their parking lot and then to the drive-through.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
There is actually some additional space next to the drive-through going to the north that they would retain as well.
Okay. I was just looking along the retaining wall, because it looks like it's coming to the area that's outside the fenced area, which I would think would go to the old property, and it must, it's just probably the way I'm looking at it in this picture.
So if you're looking at this picture.
Yeah, I'm looking at that.
Curbs a bit.
The property line's going to, like Dave said, one foot outside of the retaining wall, so kind of right along the curb, or intersects here at this inch, then it's going to start to follow. This kind of follows straight here, and then it intersects and goes just to.
Right, so they still, the retaining wall that's on the backside, and then they own the other part in front of it, but they don't have driveway access to that?
There's, like Dave mentioned, there is, right off the alley, you can park and drive right in here, there's also another area that's just gravel space. These folks that own this property will have to come up with.
Third.
Okay.
Access, just, just like they would normally.
Yeah, actually, the, the old bank building property is going to stay the same.
Yep.
Pretty much.
It's decent, it's a good building, you know? I don't know that that building is that old, what, nineteen seventies?
Yeah, I would say that.
Seventies? Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
I've got none.
Okay. I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plat of Alliance Bank, first edition, with conditions.
Second that.
I have a motion and a second to asking for approval of the preliminary plat of Alliance Bank, first edition, with conditions. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Comprehensive plan progress report.
Okay, this is going to be pretty short and sweet. Right now, we're in the process, staff is in the process of reviewing the draft plan that was sent to us by the consultant. We've also circulated, circulated that within other city departments to take a look at their sections of that comprehensive plan. We're still waiting on the four area or small area plans, if you remember those. We're waiting on the drafts from the consultants on that. But we still do have the goal of having this go to city council by at least the first of the year, so that is still our goal, and we hope we're still on track with that.
Because right now, we're, what, like, a month and a half behind?
Well, yeah, we're a little bit behind. Some of the information that we thought we, some of the information we thought we'd have in hand already, for instance, the small area plans we thought we'd be able to review. But we need to review this internally first, give our comments back to the consultants, and then we'll bring the project steering committee back in to review it as well after that.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
What, what do you think the timeline is for the project steering committee to see it?
I would say that it's going to be mid-November, probably somewhere around in there. We would, we would let you all know about that ideally two weeks in advance, if that works.
So a meeting before Thanksgiving?
If we could, that's maybe crossing my fingers too much, but.
I think that we would prefer to have the project steering committee see the complete document, which would mean the four area plans, and so we haven't had an opportunity, staff-wise, to even look at those, so it's kind of, we can't be real precise at this point in time. That's what our, our goal is.
So you're thinking after Thanksgiving, then you're going to want to meet, because if you, if the goal is still to present it to the council in a January meeting?
Theoretically, though, once, once we review it and then review it with the project steering committee or the complaint steering committee, it should be pretty close to a finished product at that point, and should be able to go to the council right after.
And we would have it before that, so we can review it before, all right. Any other? Okay, discuss appropriate land use designation for property located at lot one, lot ten, block six, Lakeside Village Edition, address twenty-four seventeen to twenty-five seventeen, Lake Avenue?
Give me one second here. There's a real short slideshow, I just thought it'd look better here on the screen. So as I'm all, I'm sure you all are aware, there are ten vacant lots on Lake Avenue and the Lakeside Village Edition subdivision. Those lots were recently advertised by Brown County, again, up for tax forfeiture, but they changed the price to one dollar per lot. Okay, they've been in tax forfeiture since two thousand and thirteen, they haven't moved at all, and they took a different route this time and decided to lower the price to one dollar. Since then, we've had a number of inquiries regarding the use of those lots, and we just wanted to discuss some options, some things to think about out in that area with those undeveloped lots. And I, I do have some photos. Unfortunately, it's really hard to get a good grasp through these photos because it's a long ways to look, there's a lot of topography and elevation change in there, so I would just suggest to go out there and take a look at them yourself, if you have time.
Yeah, I would note that I think what we want to do today is just provide you with some information, and then we want you to go out and look at it. And then we'll come back at next month's meeting and talk further about, you know.
Fair.
Yeah.
John, is this the furthest way in off of twenty-third?
Yeah.
You know, just so everybody's aware of it?
Right.
I mean, I know it, but just that everybody's thinking that this is furthest in and on the left side.
Correct. Maybe, maybe it'd be best if I jumped to one of these maps first.
There we go.
I'll go back, I'm going to go back a little bit, but just like you mentioned, twenty-first, twenty-first?
No. North Highland Avenue is.
North Highland Avenue is over here, okay? Here is Lake Avenue. The last house that was constructed on Lake Avenue is right here, is also where utilities stop. The lots we're talking about here are all highlighted in red, so they're undeveloped, going to the northwest.
Do they have utilities? You said the last utilities is, ends up there?
Ends right in here. None of these have utilities in front of them right now. Let me, let me get to a couple of those, those things, because maybe we'll cover some of the questions you have right away. So a couple considerations when taking a look at these lots. The railroad abuts each one of these lots on the south side of the property, okay, so behind each one. The lots are approximately seventy feet wide, and depths vary from one hundred and twenty-five feet to one hundred and fifty feet. The buildable area on some of the lots is limited by the slopes located in the rear of the property, and so much so as some of these slopes are up to thirty percent and take up half of the lot. So they're pretty, pretty steep, severe slopes on the back half of some of these lots. There's also known to be a relatively high water table in some, some parts of this area. Not wetland doesn't mean it's buildable, but it might limit basement construction. Utilities are not installed in front of these lots to date. When the utilities are, utilities and street improvements are installed, they're going to be assessed on a per-lot basis according to the development agreement with Lakeside Village, so that's already been established in the development agreement for the subdivision. Any changes to the use of the lots of the single-family residential would require a change to the development agreement and possibly a change to the zoning ordinance. Currently, the property is zoned R-one, which is single-family residential. So here's a, a view of part of the plat map. So again, we're talking about these nine buildable lots here in the Lakeside Village Edition. This lot right here is also part of that sale, but it's really not buildable at all. Here's an aerial view of, of those different lots. Here is the railroad where my cursor's going, so it's right on the backside of those lots. Across the road here is Lake Janessa. Number, all these properties have been purchased by another property owner or developer. There are actually two lots that are now sold to the northwest end down of Lake Janessa. Here's a top graphical map showing the elevation changes. So you can see here, we go, we actually have about sixteen feet of drop from here, from the back of this lot to the front of the lot, and that's roughly over seventy-five-ish feet, so you have a really substantial slope change there.
It's going up to the railroad?
It's going up to the railroad, correct. So a couple that with the fact that you have building setbacks from the front property line really shrinks down what you can or where you can build on those lots. Here's a zoning map. All this means is that all of the properties around these that are tax forfeited are also all R-one, single-family residential. So there is just some options, here are a few options maybe to take a look at or consider further is for the development of this property. We could leave it as is and wait for R-one or single-family residential development to occur. We could allow for the construction of storage buildings without a permitted use on the property, that would likely be through a plan unit development or conditional use permit process. We could amend the zoning ordinance to allow for a percentage of residential space to be less than the attached garage space, therefore promote, or sorry, not promote, allow for a shouse or shed house in certain locations. What I mean by that is our current zoning ordinance, or the way our zoning ordinance is written right now, it says that fifty percent or more of a residential structure has to be for the residence, meaning that the garage can't be bigger than the living space. Or we could consider promoting marketing or working with the developer to plan for tiny homes or smaller-than-average homes on the property. And that concludes this little, little presentation, and I just wanted to provide you with this information. If there's any questions you have for us right now, we're happy to try to answer them.
I went out there and looked at the properties and noticed that every property out there, and I mean, not these ones, but the ones that were, that people started building on and I mean, not these ones, but the ones that were, that people started building on, had a large black structure on them. Is that the new sewer, or is that, what is that?
Large?
I'm talking about?
Is it up by the road?
Yes, mhm.
Cover the manholes?
Cover the catch faces?
Yeah.
So it's temporary, not permanent?
Right.
Okay.
Any idea what square footage would be possible when we talk about a tiny home?
How many, how many, what would be like the minimum we'd allow for? You know, we talk about a, yeah, we do, we talk about an efficiency apartment or residential dwelling space, a minimum of 400 square feet. You know, I would, I would just, tiny homes are typically maybe a little bit bigger than that, but not a heck of a lot bigger than that.
Is there, I mean, have the developers expressed an interest in tiny homes, or is it just, you're thinking just going with the trends within the United States that it's become kind of popular for tiny homes, or, I think it's been in our discussions that, you know, it's due to their affordability also?
Right.
You know? And I think with our consultant, we even saw a plan where they kind of liked a, shared a common green space, but kind of built around a circumference, you know, with several of them.
Right.
You know?
You know, we've talked to developers about that, but no one's really come forward to come up with a plan or work with us on a plan for this, this lot and these areas in particular.
I don't think this particular parcel of property lends itself to that type of a development approach. I think this is probably going to be, you know, where you've got lots or houses in a row. One other thing I would note is that in our R1 standards, we do have a minimum building size of 720 square feet. So we, you know, we do have existing zoning requirements that are going to impact this. The other thing is we have that development agreement in place, and the development agreement, I believe, has language to the effect that these are supposed to be lots for single-family dwellings. So at some point, we'd have to bring the city attorney into this discussion as far as what is possible.
Dave, I just want to clarify something, though. When you said that type of development, you weren't referring to tiny homes in particular, you were referring to not being able to do the cottage style?
Right, not being able to do...
Yeah, and I didn't, I wasn't going there with that, you know, like the cottage, you know, with the Central Park area, but it was one of our conversations with the consultant in the past year, but...
Yeah, and, and past years, we've had developers call about doing off-grid houses. But, that being said, you build a house there, you have to run sewer and water to it, because it falls into that requirement. So that, there was a couple different developers that called on that a number of years ago, and that kind of threw it out of the, out of the mix.
Now, you said no water and sewer further down, but no, I think one of the comments was that on the lakeside, a couple of lots to that north recently sold, so there's potential that utilities will be requested to go further down?
I would say as, as those lots on the lakeside, lakeside or Lake Janessa side sell, they'll be, they'll be putting sewer and water in there.
And isn't this development slated to get street improvements in 2024 or 2025 proposed? Congress, or no?
I don't know that it's been scheduled.
It's scheduled yet, but...
Yeah.
I thought we once got an update that, you know, they're looking into.
It won't be, you won't see street improvements made until the utilities are in.
Okay.
If we, if we're looking at this, you know, as a tiny house park, or whatever you want to call it, allowing that, do we have to have the same type of requirements as a mobile village? Do they have to skirt these properties? There's a lot of tiny homes that are still on wheels. So do you run into that kind of an issue?
Well, they would have to meet the criteria of what we've got for housing, so a minimum of 20 by 20 for a structure, six-inch overhang, 312 pitch roof.
Off wheels?
Right, yeah, would have to be, it's going to be on a foundation.
Okay.
So there's requirements to, that would have to go, but, and yeah, again, you're, yeah, there's the, the trailer tiny homes, but if we've got 720 square feet, that's roughly the houses that were being built after World War II. Those were in that 700 to 900 square foot size.
Would a 720 square feet, is that what you said, is the R1, with setbacks and given some of the issues with these lots, would a 720 square foot house fit on one of these lots?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah?
Well, you know, you're asking some of the questions, you know, you should go out and take a look at them, then we should have maybe the discussion about what works.
Well, I mean, I guess I'd be interested, you know, you say there's topography, you know, is there, how far that you could cut back, or you'd have to put some sort of retaining wall in, because you really can't loosen the soil conditions for the railroad, you know, in those, you know, it's just, you know, so the developer, they've got some challenges of how to keep the erosion or, you know, yeah.
On the water chain is a concern, yeah.
Yeah, you know, so there's a lot of things there, but, I mean, I think you presented us with a, a nice amount of options that are there. But, I mean, I think that the outbuildings or construction storage buildings that the neighbors, you know, everybody might want an extra little storage thing down the street, and it'd be convenient in their neighborhood, but I don't really know that we've ever done that in the, in the community, but I think, you know, if we can talk about it, I think, I think it's worth looking at for storage.
What does, the other question is whether backed up to the railroad, how much of a noise consideration is it? I mean, that, that's going to make those less desirable lots as well, right?
Well, just the railroad track in itself makes it less desirable, but when those other ones were built out doing inspections, the noise travels over the top. It's actually sometimes less noisy there than it is other places in town where the train's not even closed.
Yeah.
So, just kind of depends on time of day and weather and stuff, but...
Sure.
Unless I'm blowing the whistle right there, at the intersection, yeah, yeah.
But there's times it sounds like it's in my backyard, too.
Showing the club, this is my, my front yard, yeah, yeah.
I think the interesting concept there, too, I'm glad you brought forward, is the shouse.
Yeah.
Concept, I, I think there's a market out there for that, and I, I think that would be an interesting thing to think about on the road.
Has insurance come around? I probably should ask you that, because a lot of, you know, five years ago, you had problems insuring something like that, and, and have they come around a little bit?
There, a lot of people are building them.
Yeah, because I know a few people that put them up in the wall, but they had a real hassle, so it's getting better, okay? Except you don't have alley access here because of the railroad tracks, right? It's all, all in your front yard or driveway clear around your...
It would have to be front load, probably.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I'm going to just throw this out here, is there an opportunity that one could put a roll housing in there, or, you know, or just, just thinking out loud here, you know, that if it's one, say, a building of six and then a space and building of six, or hypothetically, you know?
You're talking like single-family attached housing?
Yeah, you know, like a roll housing, you know, or common walls, I'm just, you know...
Yeah, that's not, I mean, it's not currently permitted.
Correct.
R1, so we'd have to take a look at what would be kind of the obstacles there, or what would need to be taken a closer look at in our zoning ordinance.
I guess I'm going to have to drive out there to take a fresh perspective, look at it, but, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Any, okay. Discuss finding effects form?
Okay, at last month's meeting, we had a discussion about the, the process for approval of land use requests and the findings of fact form that, that we were using. And so, you know, we said we'd take a look at, you know, what other communities were doing and try to generate some information for, for your consideration at this meeting. And in doing so, we ran across some documents that, you know, we'd like to share with you, and some information we'd like to share with you. And the first is a, a piece of information that was, document that was prepared by Eric Nilson, Assistant City Attorney, and this is for the city of Minneapolis, and I believe Mr. Nilson now is their acting city attorney. And so he basically had, you know, a document that addressed legal findings to support land use decisions. And it was, it's fairly well-written, it's basic, I think it's understandable, and so I found it of interest. So I wanted to share with you a couple things from that document. And he asked it, or he prepared the document using questions and then providing answers. And so question number one was, why do we need to make findings, and what is the standard of review by a court in a lawsuit? And he says, the short answer is that Minnesota law, both statutory and case law, requires that the reasons for a city's decision on a land use case must be articulated on the record. In land use cases, the court's review of a municipal decision is very narrow. And by very narrow, what that means is that there's a limited number of things that the court can consider in deciding, you know, a case. And, and we'll get into that in just a little bit. The standard of review by a court when a city's land use decision is challenged is whether the city had a rational basis for its decision. So if we go to the second page, we'll kind of pick up on that discussion, and he writes, "The narrow standard of review accorded to municipal land use decisions illustrates the vital importance of articulating findings of fact and reasons for each decision on the record, so that the reviewing court can clearly identify the basis for the decision. The role of the court is to examine the city's articulated reasons and ascertain whether the record before the city council supports them. The reasons or findings given by the city must be legally sufficient and have a factual basis." And so that is why we go through the findings of fact process. This document also had some additional information that I want to share with you. The next page, the top piece, has to do with variances. And so what he writes there is, "The impact of precedent with a variance is often overstated. An applicant for a variance is not entitled to a variance merely because similar variances were granted in the past." Then he cites a legal case, and then he goes on and says, "Each application for a variance must be considered on a case-by-case basis in accordance with the standards in the zoning ordinance." Then he goes on to say, "The policy issue for the city council to decide is how strict or loose it should be in granting variances. If the council is too liberal in granting variances, the integrity of the standards and the code may come into question. If this occurs, however, the council should consider amending the city code rather than repeating, repeatedly requiring and approving the same variance." So that's something that we also discussed earlier. So then he went on to the question of, what is the role of neighborhood opposition in a land use application? And I might know that we haven't really experienced, you know, a lot of that, but I thought his answer was worth providing, and that is that neighborhood opposition alone is not legally sufficient reason for denial of an application. And then he cites a particular court case. "The city should take care to differentiate between the quantity and quality of neighborhood concerns." And then the very last sentence, "Unsubstantiated opinions and reactions to a pro, proposal do not form a legitimate basis for denial." So the second thing that we ran across that I wanted to share with you is, and we have a page there as an agenda, and this is, I guess, a planning commission meeting, City Vdina, and it's a joint meeting with the city council, and it's a work session, basically. And the purpose of the meeting is to review community planning and zoning. It's a training. And they had a facilitator, and it was a land use consultant, someone who's been in the field a long time, you know, held in high regard within, or in the state of Minnesota. So if you turn to the agenda, and I don't mean to go through the whole agenda, they did this in two hours, which I find remarkable, because there were over 90 slides that they had. But about the fifth bullet down is findings of fact making the public record. Again, you see the emphasis being, being placed on that. And then I took one of the pages, I thought it was kind of interesting. It reads, "You cannot always vote the way citizens want you to vote. You must vote as the rulebooks require you to vote." I thought that was, and I tried to find out if some famous individual said that, and I couldn't find anybody's name associated with that, so I don't know where it, where it came from. So we took the information that, that we could find from different communities, and John and I, I bet between the two of us, maybe looked at 20 different communities. And we came up what we think is something worth trying to see if it'll be effective or not. We think it will be. So right now, on your findings of fact form, we have the current variance question, and we took question number one, which is, is the variance in harmony with the purpose and intent of the city zoning ordinance? We ask you to say yes, no, and then we will, staff would provide a why or why not for that. And so we're proposing to go with, with a new format, and one of the first things we're going to do is on the first page, we're going to put staff recommendation. So then it's very clear where, who this is coming from. And the new format would be that, like, question number one, we're going to change it, and we're going to put, the variance is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the city zoning ordinance, if that is what staff believes is true. If staff does not believe that's true, then it's going to be the variance is not in harmony. And then we're going to say why or why not, and then we're going to have agree or disagree.
So the question will change based on your assessment?
That's correct. So...
And it's, that's a sentence, it's not a question, then. The variance is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the city's zoning ordinance, period.
It's going to be a statement on staff's part as to...
Right, I'm just, yeah, I'm just calling out that question mark, because I think that's confusing.
There's a question mark.
Thank you.
Okay. Another thing that we'd like to try is question number four right now is fairly lengthy, and it covers a variety of different things. And what we'd like to do is break it into four parts. And so it's going to read the same, it's just that you'll consider them independently, it's going to take a little bit more time, but we thought it might make it easier to respond. So we're going to break it up into, you know, allow an adequate supply of light and air. Second part would be adequate traffic flow on public streets. Third part is substantial reduction in property values, and fourth part is the public health, safety, or welfare. So it's going to be four A, B, C, D. The final thing that we're going to do is on the last page, is we're going to put together a table, and it's going to be summary of findings of fact. And we're going to have a statement, "Does the variance request answer the variance criteria?" going to have a statement, does the variance request answer the variance criteria in the affirmative and support granting the variance request? Yes, no. And so we will fill this out. And so then you will know, if we disagree with the granting of the variance, you'll know which criteria we have identified as being the reason for the staff decision. So then you can look at this in your agenda packet, and you can go back to that item and see what we said about it.
Okay, my question, are you ready for questions?
Sure.
My question goes back to the same old argument we've had. If I'm agreeing, if you say that there's sufficient entry to the light and, and I, and I'm disagreeing with you on 4A, and, because you're looking for affirmative answers on all of these in order to, to approve the variance, if I'm interpreting you correctly. You want affirmative answers to all the criteria. So when we're going through the criteria, we're going to take the vote that, or the agreement, you know, does everyone agree or disagree with that as the statement is being read?
Yes.
And if someone disagrees with that statement and doesn't, or disagrees with the response, that's the time you want it brought up. Not necessarily at the end, but we could do it at the end, but.
You can do it both ways. I think that, um, it's easier, at least, to do it at that time.
Right, because then it's fresh in our mind.
This is the item.
So we still have the same issue that, and, and if, if five, if it's a vote of five to one, agree and disagree, the, I'm assuming the majority would still rule. It's not a motion, per se, but it is agreement at that point.
Yeah, and so, um, you know, you're doing your own findings of fact.
Evaluation.
So then the find, the findings of fact form would reflect whether it was agreement or disagreement.
I don't want to pick on Joe, but I want to say, okay, the rest of us at this table agree that with this, with what the city estimation is, and Joe says no, and he could still vote no, that he doesn't agree with it, but it would be allowed to proceed because the majority had the yes vote.
Right. But at the end of this discussion, Joe can still vote no.
Joe can still vote no, correct. But I, I just wanted to be clear that the motion would carry because the majority would be voting. I didn't want it to say all of a sudden, no, you know, that one no took us somewhere else. Okay. Thank you, Joe.
John, do you have anything you want to add?
Only that we went this route because there is, uh, uh, looking at all of everybody's findings of facts, there is no way to get them all yes or get them all no. Just the nature of the questions doesn't allow for that. So we had to try a different approach, and that's what we came up with.
It was very hard sitting on this panel and, and hearing somebody say no, and then I'm going, knowing that everybody really wanted it, but the, the answer was no. And, and so sometimes the answer is no.
Right.
You know, so, okay.
The, um, the other thing that was brought up last time was the ability to say non-applicable. So would that just be stated in your staff, this does not apply, and then we can just skip it and keep going?
Right. So, I mean, but it's simply, in, in that case, it would be for things that actually aren't applicable, not that, so like, you know, um, if it's regarding topography, well, I don't know, maybe it's not even a top, topographical variance request. We'll, we'll let you know if that criteria is not applicable to the application.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is, is when you're going through all these criteria, and there's the staff recommendation, just being able to say non-applicable, so we don't have to waste time even talking about it.
Right, yeah.
In some respects, though, we're, we have to give you an answer. Um, just because, you know, that's what the, um, um, process requires, that's what the zoning ordinance requires. So we, you know, that, it, the, the non-applicable, we'll say that, but then we're going to tell you why it's not applicable. I mean, it's not.
Okay.
One, one other thing I just wanted to share with you, um, I was looking at, um, you know, variances from different communities. So I looked at, uh, variance requests from Edina. And, um, they, um, they had a request, uh, to exceed their lot area, that coverage that you can have. It's a certain percentage amount, and this person wanted to build a deck. And the coverage amount was minuscule. I mean, it, it was next to nothing. And six neighbors came in and supported the request. And staff had recommended denial because it didn't meet the finding, or the code requirements. And the planning commission, even though they had six people in favor of it, they voted denial of the request. And I couldn't track it through what happened at the city council. I didn't, I couldn't find anything, so I didn't know if it was withdrawn then or what. But I, I found that interesting. I had never, never seen that before.
Well, I want to, I know this has taken a lot of revisions and, and a, a lot of work on your parts, so I, I for one do appreciate it because it, it's, was confusing in the beginning, and it's gotten clearer and clearer for, for a lot of us, I think. So I really want to thank you for the effort that you've put into it.
It's just trying to get to be consistent, and, you know, is the bottom line, I think, and just the learning curve of fit, because, you know, there's a whole understanding of what are we trying to accomplish and, you know, and to proceed forward, you know?
And everybody wants to say yes to somebody, you know, you really want to give them what they want, but you can't always do it, so. Thank you for taking a lot of that burden on. Um, next item is the city council's decision concerning planning commission matters in October of 2023.
Okay, at the October 3rd meeting, they approved with conditions the application of Dustin and Megan Swinstead for a interim use permit to allow the operation of a dog grooming business in an RT2 zoning district at 917 11th North Street. They also approved with conditions the request of Lauren Huffman for a simple lot division of lots eight, nine, and 10 block 24 south of Center Street, and that's at 224 16th South Street. Uh, they conducted first consideration of an ordinance allowing goats within the city limits for grazing purposes. Um, and then they appointed Bobby to the, uh, planning commission. At the October 17th meeting, did they have second consideration on the goat ordinance on the 17th?
Yeah.
They did?
I believe so.
Okay. Um, there were no planning commission items on the agenda, but there were a couple of things that you might be interested in. One is that they, um, approved and ordered filed an intersection evaluation report for Center and Garden Streets. And they looked at four alternatives. Um, and those alternatives were a four-way stop, a signal, a mini roundabout, and a full roundabout. And the difference between a mini and a full roundabout is a bigger island and longer street construction leading into the actual roundabout, so there's more cost. But it also gives you more room to accommodate, uh, the, uh, turning movements. And the council ended up, uh, in, uh, recommending that they proceed with the, um, with the full roundabout. And, uh, they also recommended, if the money is available, to consider a, an underpass, a pedestrian underpass, um, linking Harmon Park and, um, the, uh, the rec center. Now, having the report allows the city to access different funding sources. That's kind of step one. So I guess now they'll see what, um, opportunities are available to secure that funding. Um, the funding for the full roundabout was two and a half million dollars, and, um, the, um, mini roundabout was 1.8 million, and the underpass, that's a separate cost, was 1.3. So, and we're talking some, some big numbers. The other thing that, um, I wanted to note that took place at that meeting is the, um, city received notice that they had, uh, received a $171,000 MinDOT active transportation grant. And the purpose of the grant is to install rapid flashing beacons at six locations within the city. Those locations were Center and Highland, Center and Garden, 10th South and Payne, Highland, um, at North Broadway and the Casey Road, some, um, and then, um, North Highland Avenue and, um, North Garden Street, and then Fifth North and Washington. And that would conclude, um, that report.
There is no heritage preservation committee activity, so is there anything else that needs to come before the commission? If not, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.